I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That was an awesome job. We had a couple of announcements. Peter, you wanted to make a mention during the announcements?
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. I just wanted to take one minute. This past week, Merrimack PD lost one of their best. Tom Iverson passed away this past week. Tom left as a lieutenant here. A very good man. He was one of my first supervisors. He was a great leader, a good mentor, just a generally all-around good man. Tom originally started in Manchester, went to Bradford as chief, was in Merrimack, ultimately went to, left Merrimack, went to Pembroke as chief, and then ended up his career in Litchfield. Tom leaves behind his wonderful wife. He leaves it behind his three children, Tom Jr., Robin, Adam, and Robin's husband, Tom, and a bunch of beautiful grandchildren. He'll be missed. It was very sad. It was very sudden. I just wanted to take that minute to recognize a good man.
Thank you very much, Peter. Appreciate it. By way of additional announcements, the town hall offices will be closed on Monday, September 2nd, for the observance of Labor Day. Harrison Faust Eagles Court of Honor will be held at Wasserman Park this Sunday, August 18th, at 2:00 PM. Harrison created and erected a memorial at Veterans Memorial Park, which is dedicated to remember Admiral Forrest P. Sherman, who was from Merrimack and served as chief of naval operations. We have upcoming town council meetings on Thursday, September 12th, here in the Matthew Thornton Room, and Thursday, September 26th, here in the Matthew Thornton Room, and Thursday, October 10th, in the Matthew Thornton Room. All regular meetings. Eileen.
The last concert of the summer concert series will be, of the summer, will take place on Wednesday, August 21st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We'll be closing our concert season with a performance by the Manchester Community Music School Concert Band. Thank you.
Is that it? Great. Any questions on the comments, on the announcements? Moving along to comments from the press and public. Those wishing to address the council on agenda items, please come forward this time. Seeing nobody, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Carol DePiero, can you hear me?
Yes.
10 Cambridge Drive. I just have a quick request. I didn't really see an item in the agenda, so I thought this might be the time to bring it up. Now that the law has passed and they're going to lower the MCLs on the water for the PFAS class, or some of them, I was hoping that maybe the town council could reach out to DES and DHHS and ask them for a community meeting to kind of explain what this means to people and what they can do to protect themselves, because I think there's still a lot of misinformation floating around, and once it becomes law, people are going to get nervous. So I think it would be nice to be proactive.
Is that something you think DES would respond to, or we, well, it's a great idea.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks. That was it.
Make that overture. Anybody else wishing to address the council at this point? Seeing none. Thank you, Carol. We'll move on to recognitions, resignations, and retirements. We have a whole list of people to be recognized tonight, and my understanding is only one of them is here. So I'm going to go ahead and read through the recognitions. From the Assessing Department, Tracy Doherty, 20 years of service. Maureen Covell, 20 years of service. And they both work in the Town Clerk, Town Clerk, Town something office. And then they transferred to Assessing. In the Fire Department, Captain Brian Dubriel, Dubriel, 25 years. Public Works, Phil Machino, 35 years. Buildings and Grounds, Robert Leverin Jr., 30 years. Highway. And from the Town Clerk Tax Collector's Office, Verinda Dulong, 25 years. She worked for Finance, then transferred to the Town Clerk Tax Collector's Office. And Diane Trivet, 30 years, as a Town Clerk Tax Collector's Office. In addition to that, we want to recognize Chief Denise Roy, who's been with the town for 25 years. Do we want to do any kind of recognition? My understanding is Denise has asked for us to make a donation to the Plus Company. Do you want to come up and say something, Denise? Or would you rather, rather be, or Brian? Go ahead.
So we all know the chief. She's very humble and told me keep it short, but she was polite enough to provide me with all these talking. That was one of her accomplishments through her career. Chief started back in 1991 as a part-time officer, being hired in full-time in 1994. She's held every position within the police department. Some notable responsibilities she's had was, she was assigned to Attorney General's Drug Task Force, where she worked in undercover capacity for two years, 2002. She worked as a police prosecutor, which I think she said was the best job ever. No, it's probably one of the most least liked positions in the police department before we had an attorney. She was promoted to captain in 2017, and then ultimately police chief in 2000, October 2017. She's a graduate of the FBI National Academy, where only 1% of law enforcement in this country actually have, can attend. And that was in 2015. And since 2014, she served as board director on the Plus Company. Denise is always willing to help out with anything. She's very caring, empathetic, willing to listen to anyone's concerns. She has the best interests of this community and the interests of every officer in this department in mind every time with every decision she makes. She's a forward thinker. We appreciate that. She's always willing to listen to new ideas, whether it comes from me or a person that just started six months ago. We're looking forward to the future in leading this department. Thanks.
He's way taller than, I'm going to be very, very brief because I want to get out of here too. I just, I can't believe 25 years has gone by like that. I literally, when I think back when I first started, and I never imagined that I'd be standing here, never mind as the chief, but being here 25 years. And it kind of, I just actually had it all put into perspective. It's one of our officer's birthday today, and that officer said, "I'm 25." And I was like, "What?" Oh, my God. I've been doing this as long as you've been born. It's a little scary. I will, I just want to say one thing. You know, I'm very, people talk about generations changing and things not matter, they don't matter as much as it used to. But I, if you look at the people who are here, I completely disagree with that. This is the unique job where we are a family, and I appreciate every single officer that I have, that I work with, and we're a family. No matter what, we always have each other's back. And I just want to say I appreciate it, and I'm humbled that you would actually take your time off to come here. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. We also have some other recognitions for tonight. The town council has been trying to present plaques to the various different organizations that are continuously and constantly making donations and supporting their town. And so, based on their past efforts and all the things that they do for the community, we have three plaques we'd like to present tonight. The first of which is to the Rotary Club of Merrimack in appreciation for the work that they do and the many donations and the amount of support and work that they do around the town of Merrimack. So you can meet me over here. So. So the plaque, and we really do appreciate all the work that you do, says, "To the Rotary Club of Merrimack, in appreciation for your generosity and continued support of the Merrimack Police Department, given by the Merrimack Town Council on August 15th of 2019," complete with the seal of the town. So. We also, we also wanted to thank the Lions Club for the work that they've been doing. So is there somebody rep, yeah. So again, prompted by the many donations and support of the police department, we thought it would be appropriate to present this plaque, which says, "Merrimack Lions Club, in appreciation of your generosity and continued support of the Merrimack Police Department, given by the Merrimack Town Council on August 15th of 2019." And again, thank you very much. And last but certainly not least. For the Lioners Club, if you could come up. So, "To the Merrimack Lioners Club, in appreciation of your generosity and continued support of the Merrimack Police Department, given by the Town Council on August 15th, 2019." So, thank you very much. Okay. Sure.
I just want to take this opportunity just to publicly thank all of those organizations. I know sporadically throughout the year, we have groups that come up, or the police or the fire department come up, for donations that have been presented to them from various groups. And for the longest time, we'd say, "Thank you, thank you." But last year, Pete, you were the one, I believe, who came up with a plaque to be able to bring, to recognize officially organizations so that it's really made public how much we appreciate what you do for the community. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thanks very much. They're heading out the door. Okay, great. That brings us to appointments. And our appointment, I think we only have one, yes. With the annual review with the zoning board of adjustment, submitted by the Zoning Board of Adjustment Chair, Patrick Dwyer, for Town of Merrimack Charter Section 6-6, at least annually, there should be a review with the Zoning Board of Adjustment. This agenda item is to highlight the board's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or could act upon. So, Patrick?
Hi.
Welcome, and thank you for coming.
Thank you. It's good to see you all. So we had 12 regular meetings in 2018 with 44 applications for variances, special exceptions, and appeals. Pretty much, you know, we had three requests rehearing. I mean, I think you guys have the statistics. There's no real new concerns, I think. Seen a lot in regards to, and had the conversation with Bill, and I think, Tom, when we were doing, we did the reappointment, a lot of non-conforming lots. So we continue to see variances and special exceptions for non-conforming lots in the town of Merrimack that were, where houses were built before the zoning laws were put in place. We did see a turnover this year. Fran Larue and Tony Pellegrino both stepped down this year, and we have, we brought on some new folks. So we are a full board at the moment and have had, you know, it's been a good year. So I don't know if there's any questions from the town council. I generally try to keep these as easy as possible for you guys.
That keeps it short and sweet. Does anybody have questions? Peter?
Just a quick one. Patrick, while you're here, and some folks are listening, I think one of the questions I get asked since I've been a counselor is people concerned about the growth. They see the apartments, they see all these houses and everything. And I think there's a misunderstanding that we can't just blanket say, "No, no more." And could you just give a brief, you know, in a nutshell, if it can be brief, on why it's just not that simple?
So, when somebody comes forward to the zoning board, there's the five criteria that they need to meet in order to get a, to get a variance approved. And if they meet the criteria from hardship to spirit of the ordinance, things to that nature, there really is no grounds for us to really say, "No." I mean, we have, we are dispassionate regarding, and are not taking any biases when we talk to, and look at people's, you know, when people come forward with the variance. We have, on many occasions, when we've, this is, when this has been raised, especially with the building of apartments, we have referred people to the planning board, because that's the board that the people of the town of Merrimack need to go and address. The zoning board is, you know, an owner of a piece of property wants to do something. If they meet the five criteria and it is legitimate, then it is, it's very hard to say, "No," unless there's some sort of, like I said, extenuating circumstance, or some sort that they don't meet one of the criteria. And that's what we try to stay very focused on with zoning. The last three years as a chair, I've really tried to steer the zoning to staying very on topic. This is a zoning board. And, and really, not necessarily pushing it to planning, but making sure that we are not talking and dealing about issues that are concerning planning. I do strongly encourage any citizen of Merrimack that is concerned about the growth to go to a planning board meetings, because that's where they're going to, that's where they're going to be able to have that discussion with those folks that are making a decision on whether or not to allow that.
Thanks for that explanation.
Finley, you had a question? Oh, okay. Nancy?
Where do the five-point criteria come from? Are they regulations? Are they state mandated? What are they? I don't need to know what they are, but where do they come from? Where do they come from? Are there regulations we have to follow?
They're regulations set forward by the town and by the state, by community development and by the state.
And the state, state laws, yes. So it's not something the town had said, "These are the things you think that are good to investigate." It's state mandated, basically.
Yes, yes. And again, to what I was pointing out earlier, because Merrimack, a lot of the town, a lot of the homes were built before the zoning laws in the 80s and the 90s that we now have. We do, we have what we refer to as non-conforming lots. So we have to, that's why we have to break some of these variances to allow people to build garages, or put up a pool, put up a fence, or an addition.
And if you were to deny somebody's application, you would have to specifically define which of the criteria they didn't meet and why.
Exactly.
Because that becomes a court record. Should they take you to court, it becomes a public record that the judge will use to then make a decision as to whether or not you were being biased, or being unfair, or whatever.
Exactly. Anytime that we cite any type of, we turn down any variance, we do have, we have to cite specifically why. And there may be more than one. Now, we are told that we only have to cite one. However, there have been cases in which we have had multiple. But yes, you're absolutely correct. And at that point, then the individual can go through the appeals process.
Right.
Which some people do.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Is there anything the council can be doing? You have a full board, you said.
We have a full board currently, and actually, I don't, I don't think there's any particular item at the moment to bring forward. We, this month in August, we'll be doing our election of our new, our chair and vice chair. We'll also be having kind of an open discussion with the board if there are anything that we're seeing that should be brought forward to town council to vote on, to review from either regulations or, or, you know, the laws, laws as it states, as far as, you know, use or something to that extent. But we'll be having that discussion this month.
And do you have any alternate positions open, or not?
No, all are alternate positions.
All are full, okay. Not that we would discourage anybody from showing interest. If you have an interest in helping out at the zoning board, we're always looking for those people, because we do periodically get openings.
Yes.
And this is kind of an unusual time that it's totally filled up.
It's, yeah, it's been a couple of years.
So if anybody's interested, they do have the support of the Community Development Department, so they're not out there on their own playing legal games. They do have professional staff supporting them, and we do have legal support for them as well. So if you have any kind of interest in serving on any town committee, by all means, feel free to contact the town offices, either through Eileen Cabanelle or anybody in the town office, and they'll be happy to give you the information you need to help join in serving Merrimack. Anything else? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Patrick.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have no public hearing for tonight. Legislative updates from state representatives? Seeing Representative Thomas in the audience?
So we've been on recess, and I've taken this recess very seriously. But I've also done a lot of things. So the first thing is I sat on a panel in Litchfield for a congressional field hearing with Congresswoman Custer and Congressman Havens. They talked about PFAS, and they asked us for suggestions. I mentioned that the United States should form an international coalition with Europe, who's done a awful lot of research on PFAS, so that we can share information. Another thing that can be done on a federal level is to protect PFAS exposure as a pre-existing condition, because we don't know what's going to happen to Obamacare. We know that this chemical is making people sick.
Is your mic on, Wendy? Can you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. We know there's more and more correlation to sickness, so it has to be protected as a pre-existing condition if people get sick. They, they have to be protected. So that's one of the things that was brought up. I have my private well tested every three months. The most recent test came back at 42.9 parts per trillion. I've been saying all along that my well is contaminated to the point where we can't use it. Now DES has lowered the standards, and there's no argument about that. Private wells in general in Merrimack need to be tested. There's a lot of people out there that still have not tested their water. They don't, a couple of weeks ago, I ran into a woman who, who asked, we were talking about the water, and she said, "Merrimack has a problem with water." And so there's still people out there that don't have this information. I think that Carol DePiero's suggestion of having DES come here is excellent. I think that's a really good one. So, speaking of things that can be done locally, knowing that my well is so high, I'm concerned about that pile of dirt at Exit 11 where all the apartments are going in. I know that the pile of dirt at the Flatley Development cannot be moved because it's so contaminated. And I'm wondering if the town has done any testing of the, of the soil that has been dug up at Exit 11. If you haven't, maybe if you could request DES do some testing. But if my well is so contaminated, three and a half miles away from St. Obane, there's a very good chance that that, that pile of dirt may be too contaminated to move. So that's something that needs to be looked into. Go ahead. Go ahead.
So, the standard, as you know, for soil is 500 parts per billion.
Right.
All right. Flatley's is nowhere near there. So, by federal standards, because the state has not adopted any, theirs is not contaminated. So.
But they've been told by DES not to remove the soil from the property for Flatley?
I don't know that that's necessarily the case.
Yeah, I think that is the case.
They have?
Yeah.
Well, it's not over 500 parts per trillion, anyway. So I don't know what the.
I thought it was testing at 19,000 parts per trillion. One of them.
The wells, not the soil.
Okay. But, but I know that Clark Friesy has, has, has said that they cannot move the soil because it's too contaminated. So maybe that's something we need to look into.
We'll have to, we'll have to look into that further.
Okay.
All right, sorry.
So I would just, I would, if that's happening at Flatley, I would suggest that there'd be testing also done at Exit 11 and any other construction site in town.
There was testing done at the various schools and stuff, and the levels were not at a level anywhere near 500 parts per billion.
For, the soil was tested?
Yeah, the soil was tested.
Early, way early.
Early on in the program. So I'm guessing the soil is not that contaminated, but we could reach out to DES, ask, ask them.
All right. Thank you. That would be good. There's a question about stormwater discharge levels in town. Are they tested on a periodic basis, and is the information collated and compiled and presented somewhere? Does anybody know?
We are currently in the process of doing a very extensive project that we have to do, which is called the MS4 permit for our federal stormwater. And for that reason, we've had to identify 100 or more, how many done? 88 outfalls where things need to be tested. So what I can tell you is that DES is currently testing the St. Obane site, and has tested the St. Obane site, but I'm not aware of any other, any other testing that's being done having to do with any other outfalls.
But is the town doing any testing?
No.
Not at all? Okay. Okay. So, getting back to the private wells, so we now know that private wells are heavily contaminated, and so we need to have guidance, because one thing that DES did is they lowered the levels without telling people what it meant. And so I'm having tons of people contacting me, saying, "What does this mean? What do I have to do?" This kind of stuff. So I'm working in a group with UNH Dartmouth Hitchcock and with Congresswoman Custer's office to get grant money so that we can develop educational materials specific to New Hampshire for the entire state, because this is going to be a statewide thing. This is not just Merrimack, it's not just Southern New Hampshire. This is the whole state. So we're working on that, but that's going to take a while to develop and get it out there. So I'm, I would encourage the town to give some kind of guidance, if only through DES, to tell people what they can do, you know, if you're on a private well. What's a legitimate test you can have done? What testing labs are appropriate? What filtration systems work, which ones don't? I've had people come up to me and say, "Oh, we're fine. We're using Brita filters." Brita filters don't work. So we, we need to get that information out. And I'd be very happy to work with the town on educational material if you, if you would like to have that done.
Oh, Wendy?
Yeah.
Just a point, information? I know that when DES brought out the new, enrolled out the new MCL levels, they do have very extensive information on their site for private well owners, as well as a listing of companies that they can use to do private well testing.
Okay, so maybe we can pull that out.
There's also some other information there as well. So in your work with Representative Custer, are you also including DES as well, as they've already got a lot of those materials developed already?
There is a member of, from DES on our team.
Great.
So, yeah. Yeah, we're including that. The other thing that the town can do with regards to methodology and information is how do we, as residents of the town, dispose of our spent cartridges? So my, my family, my house, we have seven discrete cartridges that filter the water. Those get swapped out every six months. That means I put seven spent cartridges that are filled with PFAS into the transfer station, and basically, they're just going back into the environment. We don't know where they're going. So I would like to see the town develop some sort of, and I know, Barbara, you were talking about this, some sort of a methodology for collecting these cartridges. I don't know if they get sent to a special landfill. I don't know if they get sent to a special landfill that's lined or a special place, but as a town, we're being seen as the front runner on, on how to handle this problem. And so I think it would behoove us to come up with a, some kind of a methodology to collect these cartridges and to dispose of them correctly.
As you know, in some of our conversations, I mentioned that I'd already asked Clark Friesy this like umpteen times over the last year.
Yeah.
And he just recently, last month, said again, nothing special needs to do, to be done with them. But I've sent him another email because we have regular pen pal correspondence going on.
(laughing).
Just to, you know, reiterate that there's a lot of concern about this and can you give us a little bit more directive on, you know, how they should be collected and if our transfer station needs to do anything particular with them? Like I'm still waiting for a response yet, but we'll see if he comes back with a different answer because as time goes on, more and more research is being done, technologies are changing, so we'll see what he says now.
Yeah, I can reach out to Clark too and just bug him.
Peter, do you have a quick question?
Yes, actually just a comment. Wendy, I guess one of the things I think about is as these laws or regulations unfold, whether they're federal or state, you know, and I think it's good, I think that, you know, obviously we want clean water, but maybe there can be some consideration and maybe it already is happening, that the impact, the financial impact
Oh, yeah.
On the towns and, you know, getting us some relief. So if a regulation requires us to have higher standards in our wastewater or so forth and we have to do some things to change the process that costs money, you know, could you keep in mind as well as your fellow representatives to work in some, possibly some language that's, you know, gives us some relief?
The municipalities were represented at the congressional hearing, so, and they voiced that, that, and it is, it's not fair that the towns and the cities have to, have to pay for this. They didn't do it to themselves and we get that, you know. The, the state is in the process of suing. There's two lawsuits, once again, one against DuPont and 3M and one, one against Kimoris. That will result in some money that will go back to the towns, but we're not going to see that for a long time. So, yeah, I mean, that, that's an ongoing issue. Congresswoman Custer and Congressman Pappas are both looking into getting sort of grants and/or low-cost loans to cities and towns to, to deal with this specifically. So it is a concern. I mean, I mean, how do you balance cost and human health? It's very difficult.
Yeah, and you're not the only rep that's come before us and I appreciate you guys being here and updating us, but I have mentioned it to the others too because that's a concern.
It is, it's, it's, well, even on a personal level, I mean, it costs a lot of money for me to filter my water and it's not something that I did or I, you know, it was done to us. So I, I, I get it, I get it. On, on Thursday at two o'clock, Governor, Governor Jay Inslee is going to be here to talk about PFAS. He's going to hold one of the PFAS community discussions. That's going to be a good one. He's like Mr. Environment, so a, a lot of people are interested in hearing what he has to say. And I, I talked with Chief Roy earlier. His, he's a sitting governor, so his security detail will come to the town hall the day before to just check it out. I'm going to have them connect with Chief Roy. Do you want me to have them connect with you as well?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, okay. So it's, it's not a big deal, they just, because he's a sitting governor, that he's got a security detail. And then on August twentieth, we go back into action, our recess is over, and I'm the chair of a subcommittee that's going to be looking at the OHRV bills, which is another, I mean, talk about impact of financial costs and, and people's well-being. I have a, a, a field trip scheduled to go to Mink Hill to, to hear from the residents up there. So that really has nothing to do with Merrimack, I'm just letting you know that, that I'm on that committee. And it's, it's going to take the wisdom of Solomon to solve that problem. So I think that's about it for me. Any questions?
Eileen, did you have something real quick?
Yeah, this is probably a really dumb question, but has the budget passed?
No, no.
All right, so where are we with the, with the state's budget?
We're still waiting. There's a three-month limit on it, so something has to be done within three months. The entire legislature has been called back September eighteenth and nineteenth. Those are veto days, so I think they're going to choose the bills that we're going to try to override on vetos. I think the budget will be up at that time, but I don't really know. They're still working on it and they seem to be at an impasse.
Okay.
And this is my first time, so I'm not quite sure what that actually means. I know we've defaulted to the previous budget, which, and so there's a lot of agencies that are really hurting right now because they weren't written into the previous budget.
Okay.
So I'm learning and I'll, I'll report back as I hear anything.
Yeah, I, this sounds very simplistic again, but from what I understand, it's primarily because of school funding and the source of that school funding, right? So the, the legislature in, in general approves of a budget that increases the amount of money that goes to deserving towns that really need it. And it's, it's a really good opportu- opportunity for, to do, to do the right thing because, you know, a lawsuit was just lost on that.
Right.
That we're not adequately funding in, in education and that's clearly the truth when schools in Berlin and various places are closing down or their tax rates are forty-five dollars a thousand. So I'm, I, from what I understand, it's the, the legislators, for the most part, want that budget to be passed with, with the school aid and the governor is concerned about what that funding source will be, whether it's a sustainable funding source or a one-time funding sources. Do, do I have that kind of right?
Um...
Or is it bigger than that?
It's, it's bigger than that.
Okay.
But, but that's, yeah, the, the budget, the current budget that is being proposed fully funds the school system for the first time in, in many years. And so, so that's, you know, where are we getting the money? It's, it's sort of a mis- misrepresentation to say that the, the budget is being held up just because of that. There's also Governor Sununu is trying to get in very large tax cuts for businesses and so that's, that's hitting a snafu as well. And you also know that the governor recently vetoed three gun bills. I don't know if those are coming up for a veto potential override or not, but nine out of ten New Hampshire residents were in support of these three bills, so it had high support. So we don't know what's going to happen with those, but that's independent of the budget. So, so the budget is very, and it's very complicated, yeah. But, but I'll, we're going to be going back up to the state house, we're obviously going to be having meetings and I'll bring back the information.
Barbara, you got another question?
Yeah. Just a thought for the future because you were talking about working to try to get more funding for the, you know, especially the smaller towns, more so than the cities, cities. As you know, DES will be coming out with groundwater standards and he's already said they're working on soil and so they'll be coming out as well. You know, right now, the, for drinking water standards, it is the water systems that are having to foot the bill and we'll be looking at starting to test in October. Once they pass the groundwater as well as the soil, then it's probably going to fall to the cities and townships to be able to do that testing. And as you know, there has been no funding on that. But DES and the federal government not in the habit of setting standards and then not expecting you to test
Correct.
To see where you fall on those standards. So yes, any kind of funding that comes down would be a good thing.
Yeah, no, I, I, and again, I mean, I, I hear you. Pennecheck right now is panicking because their recent levels came in at nineteen, which now puts them out of compliance. And I went to a meeting earlier this, this, actually in the wintertime where they were sort of guffawing, you know, that they expect us to clean up, you know, that one drop in an Olympic-sized swimming pool, you know. So, so they're in a position where they have to clean it up. Merrimack has been disproportionately affected by this and the reason we have been disproportionately affected by it is because St. Cobain lives in our town. I don't know if a lawsuit against St. Cobain is appropriate for the town, but the town should not be paying this kind of money to clean this up. We didn't do it to ourselves. So I would, I would highly recommend that the town look into a lawsuit against St. Cobain to, to recoup some of these costs. I don't know if that's even possible, but... Oh, one other thing is, is that in the congressional hearing, it was brought up that St. Cobain actually holds several contracts, several multi-million, million-dollar contracts with the DOD for the products that they produce. So there is the possibility that the DOD could help with remediation. We're, we're looking into that. But, I mean, we're trying as hard as we can. I mean, we have been fighting and fighting and fighting to lower these standards to protect people's health and now we're fighting to, to make sure that people's pocketbooks don't get emptied because of this, because that's not fair.
Thank you, ma'am.
Finley.
Wendy, if you happen to know, would you be able to elaborate on those tax breaks that the governor was trying to get into his budget?
I, I don't know them. I, I would have to look them up. I don't know them offhand. I've just heard that, that he's trying to get some business tax cuts put in place and, and that's being pushed against. I can get, I can get the information.
If you have a chance, but don't, don't make it difficult. Thank you.
Well, I'll look it up, I'll get it to you. And I'll get you, Eileen, I'll get you the educational materials as well, the funding.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Which brings us to the, Eileen?
I think that we are starting to veer away from legislative updates here at, at the meetings. When we get into legislative updates, we're not really talking about legislative updates, we're talking about PFAS. So I don't, obviously there, there's no problem with that, but I think that it should go on the agenda if somebody wants to come to the council and talk about that particular topic unrelated to what's going on at the legislature.
I, I agree and was thinking to bring that subject up as well. We've tended to, the last couple of times we've had people come talk to us, all they've talked about has been PFAS issues. And if PFAS issues are something we need to talk about, then, then we'll get it on the agenda or ask that you bring it up as an agenda item as opposed to legislative updates. We, you did bring legislative updates and that's fine, I'm not complaining about it, I'm just saying that we need to start considering a separation of thoughts there.
Well, there used to be a PFAS update on the agenda.
There was and then we thought we had it behind us and now it's come back in front of us, so we may end up re-establishing that. I don't, well, but just...
But in the meantime...
In the meantime, if you, if you have specific things you want to talk about, you know, go ahead and let us know and we'll be happy to agenda it. Finley?
Then I, not to belabor this right now, but I think we should have Sarita come because that was the idea behind putting those on the side, that when there was an update, we should be made aware of or even deeper, maybe the community, Sarita would come in and apprise us of those types of things.
You should microphone us?
Yes, am I talking, speaking too softly?
Lean forward.
Or pull it to you. Did you hear what I said though?
I did.
Thank you. Should I repeat it or am I good?
No.
Before we move on, are we set?
Yes.
Before we move on, I failed to follow a couple of protocol requirements for somebody being on a, on a telephone line for our meetings. So Bill, if you're still listening...
Oh, I'm here.
I just wanted to ask you, thank you for being there, I just wanted to ask you if you're by yourself?
I have my dog Molly, is that a problem?
No, sir. And so you're telling me there's nobody there coercing you in any way in, in any votes that you would take here at this meeting?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So just for the public record, Bill Boyd is not available to be here in person, but he is calling in on the telephone. And if we take any votes tonight, it will have to be by roll call vote so that everybody can get recorded. So if you can help me remember that, I'd appreciate that. Okay, moving along, town managers report.
So we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting, an inspection of the Reed's Ferry Fire Station, also called Station Three, on Wednesday, yesterday. And four companies came and attended the walkthrough and the proposals are due on August twenty-first. And just to remind everybody, the remedi- the proposal is for remediation of all the rodents, pests and critters, as we refer to them. Pressure washing and cleanup of, of the excrement and renovations to include sealing the entire building to prevent reinfestation and to repair and replace the broken windows and the hose drying tower. So basically we're cleaning it up and sealing it up so, and not doing any extensive renovations. So that's underway. The planning board held their first public hearing on the comprehensive overhaul of the town's site plan regulations. The board requested some minor changes and will continue the public hearing until September third. And it's, it's a very important thing for, to do periodically, take a look at the site plan regulations and review them to comply with today's laws and the common sense of, of what's going on in the town right now. The community development department is in the final stages of filling the assistant planner position. We lost another one. We, Tim Thompson trains them. Yep, Tim Thompson trains them and out they go, usually in less than a couple of years. Our last one went to Portsmouth, you know, for higher level, better, better jobs.
Stepping up, yeah.
Stepping up, yes, not a better job.
Not just going for a higher pay, but filling for a better job.
No, definitely not a better job, yes. So, so we will, we expect to have somebody on board fairly soon. We had some interests, which is really nice, from new graduates who are looking for some training, I'm sure, but we're grateful to have them while they're here. The Merrimack Public Works Department will be partnering again with Eversource again this fall with residents to, to have a disposal day for Freon appliances and such in, in the fall. So save up your old air conditioners and refrigerators and freezers and you can bring, you'll be able to bring them to the transfer station free of charge. So we'll be keeping people apprised of what's going on on Facebook, Public Works Facebook and, and on the, at the transfer station Facebook. School is starting soon, so unfortunately, summer just zipped on by. And with that comes increased traffic and in the morning and the afternoon periods, please avoid the Bedford Road Bridge detour unless you need to utilize that particular corridor. You'll save yourself some time and aggravation. So, just to let you know. So that's it, thank you.
That's it.
Were you going to say something in any way?
Was, but nobody put it on my announcements. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to let you know, I'm actually going to let Paul speak about, about his meeting that he had with NYA. He reached out to them and he offered to come over and help with them and, help them and meet with them and he did. And things seem to be progressing along nicely, fingers crossed, so, Paul?
Yep, at the last meeting, as you all know, I offered to sit down with them and, and their program directors and, and explain what the council was looking for in, in to try to help them receive their funding again. When I went to the meeting, there was a gentleman there and I don't know his last name and if I did, I'd butcher it anyways, but he's from the score company and he's a finance CFO, retired CFO from a local company and he's willing to help them and give them as much time and his efforts as possible. Gave a couple of great suggestions when I was there to the board. We discussed what the council was looking for in, in the way of, of revenue recognition and, and registration and things of that sort. At the meeting, I was told that they have reconciled their eighteen, nineteen registrations with the revenue.
Big deal.
That's a big, huge deal. Yep. And then I promptly said, you should call the auditor and get him in here to audit your books if you have that done because that was one of the big holdups of your audit. So went back and forth a little bit about that. So went back and forth a little bit about that, explained the importance of potentially getting an audit. What came out of it is the president of the MYA and the treasurer and the executive board heard what the council had to say, and they're working to try to come back and work with the council to get their funding back restored for, hopefully, some of it for this year, but definitely in years to come. So they are willing to work, and they did listen, and they're trying to improve. I think this gentleman that they are bringing on is, will help them. They also have advertisement for a bookkeeper. So they, I don't think they have met with the company yet, but they understand what they need and what that, how many, they're trying to formulate how many hours they need the person for and things of that sort. It's not a full-time position. We discussed that a little bit, what I thought the number of hours would be. So they were okay with that, but they were going to take it, and this gentleman from this organization would sit down with them and actually formulate duties so they can give it to a company or give it to a person, say, "These are the duties we're looking for," so they're not coming in blind, so...
And nobody has checkbooks anymore?
Yep. They took away all the checkbooks. They took away all the debit cards. They were in the process of changing all the PIN numbers for the debit cards, because their programs still need to buy stuff, because football is starting in two weeks, and soccer's starting, so the concession stands needs to go, need to go to stores and buy some of this stuff. So they're working on getting rid of at least a debit card, but more of a credit card purchase. So they are working. They, like I said, they did hear the council. They are trying to move forward and accommodate the council with some of the requests to get things processed and moved forward. So they would like to come sometime in September, if possible, to update the council on where they actually stand and their processes and their changes that they have implemented, so... I don't know if they'll get the audit done by September, but they're going to try. They're going to try to get the auditor in to discuss, potentially auditing their books again, so...
Okay. Great. That's great news. Thank you. Are there any comments? All right, any questions for the town manager on her report? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have no consent agenda tonight. I'm going to ask if we could move the new business, number two, forward to this time, to allow the Girl Scouts to move forward, if that's okay with the council? Seeing no objections, we'll move to number two under new business. Proposed Girl Scout Silver Award Project Presentation, submitted by Parks and Rec Director Matthew Casperius. Town council to consider the approval of Girl Scouts Courtney Farrar and Mary Matheson's proposed Girl Scout project to create and develop a trail map for walking trails at Twin Bridge Park, as well as build and install bat boxes at Twin Bridge Park, Watson Park, and Wasserman Park. So welcome, girls. If you could introduce yourselves, we'd appreciate it.
My name's Mary Matheson.
I'm Courtney Farrar.
I'm welcome, troop 10144, and we wanted to present our idea for Silver Award project. So a Silver Award project is basically when a Girl Scout sees something in their community that needs to be fixed, or they think it should be fixed, and then they create a team with a representative, and then people from their Girl Scout troop, if they want to join. It can be single or up to three people, and each of them have to have 50 hours done by the end of their task. And they can team up with companies for resources, and they have to do it, and like, they create a certain timeline, and they have to ask the Girl Scout Board if they're allowed to proceed, and then if it includes using town property, then they have to go to town hall.
Well, we certainly appreciate you coming here.
And our idea is to install bat houses at three of the parks in Merrimack, and to measure trails at Twin Bridge Park.
So for the trails?
Is your mic on? Just, okay, thank you.
Our plan is to measure all the trails in Twin Bridges Park. We'll calculate the times. Can you hear me? Say it.
Just pull it forward, yeah.
Our plan is to calculate the times and walking distance for each trail and mount them on the posts at the end of each trail.
So...
So we'll be making a brochure about the trails, and the brochure will be information about different plants, including like poison ivy, and a picture so that people can be aware of the trails. There'll also be a map of the trails, and labeled on each trail will be the walking time. There'll also be information about the history and park information, and also about the bat houses.
So for the bat houses, our design idea is to have a single chamber bat house, and we have measurements written down on the standards for a bat house. And we have to have it 10 feet away from the nearest tree branch, which we went to each park, and we planned it, so it would be, and it would meet the requirements for a standard bat house.
So, if you don't mind my asking a question, are these mounted on poles or something?
Yeah, so they're mounted up 20 feet.
About 15 to 20 feet.
And they're mounted up in the sky, and then bat, it's kind of a birdhouse for a bat, basically. But it has to be high enough so that they can be high up in the sky, because bats like to be flying around usually. They don't really stand still.
So for the location of the bat houses, we've displayed four bat houses. One at Twin Bridges Park between the park and the baseball field. Another one at Watson Park, behind the gazebo at the end of the park. The third and fourth bat houses will be at Wasserman Park. One behind the first set of bleachers on the right of the park, and another at the left fence of the dog park. If we have extra wooden time, we would like to put one more bat house at Wasserman Park, behind the beach next to the fence. And these are pictures of exactly where the bat houses will be located, so the white arrow is where they should be exactly put.
So the reason why bat houses are important is because at the parks in Merrimack, it is, there's a lot of bugs and mosquitoes, which impacts people's enjoyment at the park, but bats' main food source is bugs. So if we have a house for a bat, then there is a high chance that the bug population will go down at our parks. And bugs also pollinate flowers at nighttime when bees aren't, and so it will also bring more flowers to the different parks.
You mean the bats will pollinate when the bees are not?
Yeah, so the bats eat the nectar and then distribute it. So for fundraising, our troop will contribute some money from our savings over the years. We will also go to local lumberyards and ask for donations or discounts on their wood. And if we need more money, we will be doing a car wash, and if we need more than that, we will be doing other fundraisers at the project. So for our timeline, our goal is to complete these by the end of September, and that includes the measurements of the trails, which we will both be doing together at a certain day. And then we will also be measuring the time and the distance of those trails that same day, and we will research the brochures at our houses separately. And then we will making, we're making and displaying the brochures we'll be together, and we will ask for donations before we put up the bat houses so that we can build them. And we will be building and putting up the bat houses over the course of a couple of weeks.
Thank you for your time and consideration. Does anybody have any questions?
I suspect we do. Just a second. Peter?
Girls, by the way, very nice presentation.
Absolutely.
Did you say you were going to put the bat houses on poles?
On like wooden posts.
Okay. I mean, is there a reason why make it a little easier by putting them up on trees or something?
So trees are, it's, if we put them on trees, it's really easy for predators to get to the bat houses. So if we put them on posts, it has to be far away from tree branches, so they can't like get onto the, and hurt the bats.
Any other questions? Barbara?
Do, is anyone from the parks helping you with, when you go to put the poles up?
So Matt...
Casperius.
Yes. He is going to be helping us throughout the project and giving us tips and pointers about each of the parks and lending us resources, like, so our, our project has to be sustainable throughout the years. So we will be also giving the Parks and Recs a copy of the brochure, so they can print them out as needed to put in the park. And he will be helping us throughout the project when, if need be.
Yeah, 'cause a couple of the parks have an issue with how deep you can dig those poles. So you want to check in with him to make sure that, you know, you're getting them up there safely, and they're deep enough to be able to support the weight of the bat house.
Yeah, we'll definitely check with him.
Great, thank you.
One of the, one of the standards for the project is to have a team, and he is one of the people on our team, so that is good.
Do you have a question, Finley?
No, my comments were covered.
Oh, okay. Anybody else? That sounds...
I did learn something, though, this evening. I did not realize bats pollinated flowers.
During the night hours, yeah, when they're flying around. I know they're flying all over the place. I wouldn't have thought they were pollinating in that process, because they're not landing on the flowers, I wouldn't think, but who knows what they hit? I mean, the way they go erratically around, you never know what's going on. Is there anything that we need to do besides give you approval from a town perspective, or...
No, we're good. If we find something in the, throughout the project, we will come back and ask.
Okay.
But at the moment, we have not found anything else.
But at this point, you're working with Matt, so you have approval from him, presumably, have you done a report for the Parks and Rec Committee?
Yes, they have approved us, and our Girl Scout Board has approved us.
Awesome. That's very good. If there are no further questions, go ahead.
Actually, no question. I just wanted to make comment. You ladies did very well.
Thank you.
I know it's nerve-wracking, and I try to smile when people like you come up, to help you relax a little bit. I don't know if that helped, but you did a really nice job, so you should be proud of yourself.
Thank you very much. So I think we need a motion to approve their project.
Second.
So a motion to approve the project as presented and seconded by, made by Nancy, seconded by Lon. Any other questions or comments on the proposal?
It's okay, whatever. That's fine.
Okay. So there. Thank you. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, it's got to be a roll call vote?
That's right.
Thank you. So we'll start with Finley?
Yes.
Finley, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Peter, yes? Barbara, yes? Bill?
Aye.
And I say yes?
Harrington, yes.
Would Jay?
Okay, so that passes 7-0-0 by roll call vote. Thank you very much, and if there's anything we can do to help, by all means, let us know.
I'm going to be interested to see what those bats look like, the houses.
Okay. So we did...
You did put the mic?
Call up Denise while she's cracking up laughing. We're going to move to, I don't, no idea. The old business, number one under old business is a special investigation unit. She's got me laughing now. An update. We're submitted by Police Chief Denise Roy, the town council, to be presented with an update on the activity of the Special Investigation Unit of the Merrimack Police Department. Thank you.
Always laughed at the littlest things, and now I can't stop.
That's okay.
Are you going to smile at me, Nancy, because that's all I heard of, that you're going to smile at me to make me feel more comfortable?
I always do.
Well, thank you very much for having us here tonight again. We, I had talked to Eileen about our update, and you know, I know I tried, I wish I could give you more information other than just some numbers and to say that we're really busy. However, as you know, most of the information that we collect and the things that we do are highly confidential, so it's very difficult to come in and to tell you everything that this unit is doing. I can tell you that since the inception, they have had 182 arrests. That's just the two officers. That has nothing to do with any other part of our police work. 182 arrests associated with drug activity. There have been, in the last 18 months, no, 17 months, there have been 33 overdoses. That's just the overdoses that we know about, and the ones that we try to investigate. There have been 13 overdose deaths, and I actually, Senator Shaheen was here a couple of weeks ago, and I actually was able to get a couple of minutes of her time, and I explained to her that 13 deaths in a year and a half for a town like Merrimack is astonishing.
It's terrible.
It's terrible. One is too many, but 13, that's 13 of our residents. And these aren't necessarily the people who are coming and staying at our extended stay hotels. These are residents. And, you know, to, the two officers that we have, the sergeant and the officer, that we have assigned to the Special Investigation Unit are doing so much to help curtail some of that, but as you can see, there's only so much we can do. I think I've said all along, and the deputy and I have tried to express to all of you our thanks for allowing us to, I know mid, you know, budget cycle to add two officers is pretty much unheard of, and we appreciate that you saw the need for us to do this. And again, I wish I could give you more. We have a lot over in excess of 20 confidential informants, and those informants gather the information for us where the officers can't get in, obviously. And they're with the people that are doing this business here in town. A lot of it is still concentrated around the extended stay hotels and the other hotels in town. We're doing our best. We are at unprecedented numbers as far as busy in the staffing. We're trying to put on former officers that we were down through retirements. We're trying to hire those. So our officers are stretched thin, and these two officers are trying to do everything they can just to keep some sort of semblance in town. So again, I wish I had more than just those, yes?
Oh, no, I was just telling Tom when you were done.
Oh, no, no, am I running it now? Finley, would you like to say something? I just, it's one of those nights, now I can't stop.
My rapt attention is on the chief, and you're trying to distract me.
I just, it goes without saying that we're just, it's not just our community. It's not just Merrimack. It's everywhere. But for a community our size, we're really feeling the brunt of it. Not that everybody else isn't, but I'm worried about our community. And it's just, you know, and when I met with Senator Shaheen, I just tried to explain that sometimes the little towns, and we're not so little, but sometimes the little towns get forgotten when it comes to funding for drug enforcement. We have, the state spends a lot of money on rehabilitation, but we're still forgetting about that enforcement piece that is so important for us, and that's what these two officers concentrate on. We're trying, the deputy and I are really trying to develop other ways to try to educate people. We're working with the YMCA. We're going to have a forum for family members to try to help, family members help their loved ones. We're trying to seek out grants that maybe could help us find an outreach officer that works with the Special Investigation Unit to help with rehabilitation. But all those things combined, you know, they obviously don't happen overnight, and we're just keeping a Band-Aid on it for now, and it slips off sometimes, but we try to do the best we can, so thank you for being patient.
Thank you. Finley?
Finley, would you like to say something?
Is there any way of knowing that it's getting better? Is it status quo, or is it worse than when we first began?
Well, I think right now that's a hard number to judge as far as getting better. It's getting better in the fact that we're arresting more people than we were able to before, so that is better. As far as the numbers that are in town, it's hard to say, because if we're arresting more people than what was happening before. So I think in maybe another year, we'll have a better sense of where we are. You know, it's been a year and a half. 182 arrests is pretty, for us, I mean, that's significant. So I can't really say one way or another.
Right. I don't know if ODs are going down.
Those are increasing.
Did you, you said that at the beginning?
Yes, they're increasing. So 13... Yes, they're increasing. So thirteen deaths since last year and that's just tracking since last year. Uh, I don't know, I don't remember what the number was for the two years prior, but it wasn't as high.
We have fifteen one year that was presented to us here.
Correct.
I don't remember what year it was.
And you have to remember too, um, with the, the increased use of Narcan, uh, there are, they're saving more people. Uh, and you know, there's thirty-three overdoses that those people are actually saved, uh, mostly through Narcan where they may have not been saved before. And there's also families that are allowed to have Narcan now, so we don't, and they don't always report to us or they don't call for an ambulance because they don't want their family members to get in trouble. So those aren't easy numbers to track. We, those are unknowns for us. We don't know, but, uh, reported and we responded to thirty-three overdose. That were not deaths. There's just the overdoses.
And, and lastly, if I may, at some point, um, I, I don't know if it's things that we could pull together. I'd be interested to know, uh, I know there's a drug court now that the state uses for these type of issues, trying to get help for people as opposed to, uh, putting them in the institutions and so on. But at, at some point, if we could look into that, I'd be interested is to see how it's coming around.
So we actually do participate in drug court and for those, it's kind of a misconception. Drug court is actually for the worst of the worst offenders. A lot of people think that drug court is for the offenders who they, it's their first time. They have a better chance for rehabilitation. But it's not. It's the complete opposite. Drug court is actually for, uh, the frequent offenders, the severe, uh, drug users. And they want to try to do things by giving them more oversight, so they have to check in more frequently with the probation parole officers. And what we actually do is send, we have officers who are, are training and we're trying to send more officers training through drug courts so that we have our own liaisons here because let's face it, probation parole in Hillsborough County is stretched extremely thin. So our officers, for the people who actually reside in Merrimack and who are participants of drug court are able to check in on them one-on-one. So we have, right now, I think we have two officers, two officers. We're trying to send two more um, so that they randomly go and check on them. They try to build a relationship with them to try to see where their needs are and what we can do as a police department to help them.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Tom.
Barbara?
Hi, Chief.
Hi, Barbara.
Question for you.
I hopefully have an answer. If I don't, he does.
I know you will. You know, we have two new hotels going up.
Yes.
And we're already stretched thin. What are your plans for being able to cover those two additional hotels? And are you expecting as much trouble there as you have other one?
I think there's only one hotel.
Is it one or two?
Yeah, one hotel.
Sorry.
One hotel and many apartments. Um, as far as. We're hoping that the one hotel, and I'm not sure if it's still an event center or not, um, I know there was talk of that not being it. But regardless, um, anytime a hotel is, comes up, we always worry about the transient population. Um, hope, we're, we're hopeful that this hotel might be slightly more, and I'm not disparaging the other hotels in any way, but hopefully this hotel will be a little more upscale so that the clientele that goes there, um, is geared more towards the business people in town. The Fidelis, the VAEs, the Budweisers. So that might help. Not to say that they can't infiltrate that hotel too. Uh, but they're usually with those hotels are more restrictions when it comes to people who are able to check in, to reside there, how long they can stay there. Um, and with the increased prices, obviously those are less attractive to the, to the transient population.
Peter?
Chief, thanks for the update. A couple of questions, um, and Barbara brought up the hotels. Um, and I know you folks reached out. I don't wanna identify any particular hotel, but you reached, you, you were doing pretty good with one problem hotel. What's the level of cooperation? Are we still getting a good level of cooperation by these hotels, would you guys?
I don't, I think the level of cooperation has diminished a little bit. I think they do a lot of, um, management changes. And the management, uh, I know there was one particular, um, hotel, um, that the manager who was there was phenomenal. And she was working with us and she was helping. They were taking just cash. We got them to take credit cards and, and so those. I'm not suggesting that they don't work with us, but it, it just maybe, I mean, they're in it for the business. And, um, working with the police isn't always in their best interest, so, um, I think it's diminished a little bit. We're still trying to keep open communications and the SIU officers do go in there and they do talk to people. They do have employees that, that are helpful and they do everything we can, but I just don't think it's, in the beginning, it was at the, it's not at the level that it was then.
Now, is it worth reaching up to the next level, the corporate level? Cuz this affects their brand. You know, whether, whatever the hotel is to, if you, if you aren't getting a level of cooperation, say, to go to them and to say, hey, you know, your people, your local people aren't helping us.
It's a very good idea. Certainly something we can explore.
Um, the other couple of questions is, and I'll try and move along, um, the task force. Are we still involved with Hillsborough County?
We are. So it's Granite Shield and we are still involved. We are still involved. We have some personnel changes. Uh, for those of you who don't know, Sergeant Sean Castle is now Lieutenant Sean Castle and he is now going back into the Patrol Division. So we have a new sergeant who's assigned, uh, to the unit along with, uh, another officer who has actually been in the unit before to, to try to transition. So there is some training period, um, that we have. Lieutenant Castle is still involved in helping, in helping. Uh, but we do, as far as the task force goes, um, because Lieutenant Castle was a major part of that, we're transitioning the new sergeant into that. And, um, you know, it, it, we're not gonna, that's, that's a resource for us. We're not gonna give that up. It's very important. It's all grant funded so that, you know, the grant money ebbs and flows, so it's, we have to, whatever comes our way, we, we take advantage of when we can. But when the money runs out, we have to kinda make do with, with what we have until it starts again, so.
Do we have representation on any other task force?
No, we do not. Right now, we just don't have the, I would love to, uh, because of those resources, but right now, we just don't have the personnel for that.
Now, um, and I'm curious, the part of possession of narcotic drug and everything, um, if you guys are seeing an uptick in DWIs under the influence of drugs?
We are, and I'll actually let the deputy speak to that.
It's probably say on the average for drug related DWI offenses, we are seeing DWI increases. They're making arrests almost two or three a week now, which is.
We can't hear you. I'm sorry. You need to pull, thank you.
Say, uh, DWI drug cases, I think are fairly similar to what we've seen in the past. However, our DWI arrests have increased, uh, quite a bit. It's almost like two or three a week now. Uh, most of those aren't action related, that means our officers out there proactively checking the roadways and catching violators.
Do we still have a drug recognition expert?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do we plan on looking at maybe, and I, and I know the training for these folks are onerous, but do we look at maybe putting another one, having another one or two?
There's a couple of things that go on the courts right now, I think, that need to really check out and see if that's worthwhile to, as you said, it's a very lengthy process with continual certifications, traveling and such, but some of that we can explore and we keep an eye on that as well.
Thanks.
Eileen?
I know you, I know, I keep being this drum and I assume that you don't have the answers to this or you haven't been able to, um, find anybody who knows the answers to this, but, um, when a hotel moves into our town and changes the whole landscape of the drug situation for the worse and are having repeated calls, um, they're taking way more of, um, they're a nuisance, I guess, to put it in a very, very mild way, kind way. Um, they're, um, you know, I, I need to know if there's some way that, um, as we have in the, at the fire department, who, there, there have been people who regularly call the fire department because they wanna ride somewhere and call nine-one-one. Um, there's, I, I can't believe that a, a hotel that, whose policies encourage this kind of thing. And I'm, I'm not convinced that, um, that they're not marketing, their brand is not marketing for this clientele um, in, in a corporate level, um, that, that there be something that we can do in terms of fining them um, for, you know, over, for calling, for using, using up our resources and that kind of thing is right, yeah.
We do, cuz we have spoken about this before and it is through the county attorney's office, um, as far as nuisance. And so that's probably where we're at, so.
Now, I, I, I know we've talked about it, the rooms tax, that we can get a percentage of that or add it on. Is that, we discussed that earlier this year. I'm sorry?
It's, uh, from what my research showed, it was held in committee. They never went, uh, further.
Okay.
Nowheresville.
We try.
That's to the left of Margaritaville. Um, any other questions at this point?
So, so the bottom line is there is no mechanism that's viable?
With our current county, um.
Attorney.
Attorney, no, there is not.
Is there anything the Town Council do, can do to encourage the county attorney to consider? Would that be of any help?
I think at this point, I mean, if this, if we go down this, this road, I think that we would need to do our homework first and make sure that we have the appropriate, cuz there is a nuisance statute, um, that relates directly to businesses. So, um, if we, if the deputy and I do our homework and maybe we come back and, or we actually go to Eileen and we can show you what we have, um, it, we could present it and see how that goes. I'm not sure, uh, right now if that, that's gonna happen or work for us, uh, but it's certainly something that we can explore. And we can get that done, uh, fairly quickly within the next few weeks.
I think the council would be responsive to requests that would help support that if, if that's what's necessary.
It would probably be more helpful than just coming from the deputy and I, that we have the council's backing on that. And the, and obviously the town manager's backing, number one, and, and I think if we could, um, do that, it's certainly something. What's the worst that's gonna happen? Nothing, right? I mean, it's better than trying and than, you know, doing nothing, so we can try.
I mean, there, there's a law called common nuisance and it's been applied. It, you know, if you allow certain things to take place in your home that maybe you don't particularly, uh, do, but you allow and it creates a common nuisance for the community, that.
And it's certainly much more difficult, as Peter knows, for, uh, a business to show that the business is, is.
Is responsible.
Responsible for and allowing and, and, you know, and, and I agree with you that there are certain businesses that, that, you know, you have to know if you drop your prices to forty-nine ninety-nine, uh, you know, you have to know what you're going to get, especially in today's climate, so.
So.
Off the highway, in between the two largest cities in the state.
Back when you first came and presented the SIU, you were asking originally for three officers, I think, and we kinda compromised and acknowledged two and then brought them on immediately and allowed you to, some overtime to try and backfill those things. My mic is on. I don't know why I'm getting a light. Um, how, how are we situated now? I mean, obviously you're stretched thin as far as your staffing is concerned. You have some open positions now because of retirements or?
Correct. Because of retirements and resignations, uh, we are currently in the process of, uh, we have four candidates that we're trying to put on. Uh, and, and as you know, and we've talked about before, that's just such a lengthy process that it's difficult. So, uh, what we're doing now is, is again, with the Band-Aid solution, trying to, you know, we're having to pay overtime to fill shifts and, and we're running with minimums and, and it's not, it's not working perhaps as well as we would like, but we're doing what we have to do. Uh, and it, you know, is it, if you're asking if we would come forward and ask for perhaps another person, we're trying, what, cuz we understand. We understand the strain that it puts on, on this town with everything else. So that's why one of the options we're trying to do is look for a grant that perhaps could fund an outreach officer that would work directly with the SIU and, and be essentially the third person, but have a slightly different role, but obviously have the manpower to, to help out when needed, so, yes. And again, I think we, I, I think I said in my ideal world, three people and a supervisor would be fantastic and it's still, that hasn't changed. If anything, it's, it's probably, we're getting to the point where, you know, it might be a necessity if we keep going at the pace that we're going at. And right now, there's no signs of slowing down. Over this, this summer has probably been one of the busiest summers, uh, that I've experienced in, in a long time. And I actually happened at one of the local hotels, um, you know, we were desperate when I had to go back somebody up. When I'm the only person that has to go. And I was standing in, in the hotel area with this, one of the, the veteran officers who's been here twenty years. And he said, Chief, never, ever, I've been in patrol for twenty years and I've never seen it as busy as it is right now. They just. And, and cuz when we go to these hotels, it's a requirement that we send to people. We have to send to people because we just don't know what the element is on the other side. And for, and I'm not willing, and the deputy are not willing to risk the safety of these officers. And if it means that somebody might have to wait a couple of extra minutes, we, we've had to determine that we're gonna have to do that in order for them to be safe, so. I probably just went off on a tangent, I'm sorry.
I, I definitely appreciate that, especially when you look at what happened in, was it Philadelphia recently? When they went in for a drug raid or something like that.
We actually, with the captain, we're, we're talking last night and it's just, it, it shocks your conscience and it's narcotics. And we don't, we obviously do things a little bit, and I'm not disparaging them, that we just do things a little bit differently. But it, for people to say, it can't happen here, they're absolutely wrong. Anything can happen here, anything.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Any other, Eileen?
I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to look at, I thought that you would have more numbers during your presentation.
You want numbers?
But, um, I do have them.
I have them too.
Because I do too. So, um, they're in your, um, in your monthly report.
That I don't have, so you have.
So I do have that. So let's see where that is. Uh, because it makes reference to how many calls to the various, um, hotels. And I, I think they all, they, each one should be named and the number of hotel, of calls should be said out loud.
And I, I do agree with Eileen on that and, and I am a proponent for saying, listen, this is, this is the hotel and this is what they're doing. Because if we, if, you know, we try to do everything we can, but if they're not listening, sometimes I think we just need to be forward and say, this is what we're, we're doing.
Okay, so, um, my report says it's for calendar year two thousand and nineteen.
And that would be just the July numbers that you have in front of you?
I have the only Ju- July numbers. This sixty-two calls to Residence Inn was this, was last month.
That's year to date.
Calendar year or fiscal year?
Calendar year.
Okay, so for calendar year, um, so far in two thousand and nineteen, sixty-two calls to the Residence Inn, thirty-two calls to the Quality Inn, forty-two calls to the Holiday Inn, and a hundred and thirty calls to Wood Springs. I just think that needs to be said.
Can you just amplify a little bit on what calls means? Is that specifically a drug related or is that any call of any sort?
Any call of any sort and that, we've had thefts, we've had assaults, we've had overdoses, we've had.
Attempted murder.
It's, yeah. Which one? I'm thinking. I'm trying to think of, I'm trying to think of which, yes, yes. Oh, last year, last year, correct, yeah. So this year, it's, um, yes, this year thankfully, not yet. I'm gonna knock on whatever wood I can find. Uh, it's just, it, it's every type of call. There's not one, there's prostitution. There, there's, there's not just one, suspicious people.
And a lot of those calls could be a simple police service looking for advice because they're dealing with a situation, um, they're trying to get out or something like that. So there are also informational calls where people are just generally seeking our advice on things.
But it's the point of the numbers of each individual one. It's, even if you put all those in there, it's a hundred and forty for the one facility.
Correct.
And again, for most of those, even if it's, if it's a call that requires, for instance, um, and we had just talked about this, if it's a theft call, a theft call might not necessarily need to, two officers to take. However, when somebody goes to one of the hotels, if, even if it's for a theft call, we send somebody to just be in the area because we just don't know what we're going to encounter once we're there. You know, intoxicated people are very common down there, uh, at all of them and, you know, having to deal with them, one person. We don't want that one person to get jumped on and not have backup at close proximity, so. Even for the most simple calls, unless an emergency comes in, obviously that will, will take them away, but we send two people.
And oftentimes, while their officers are there, they discover another call or someone comes up, approaches them about an issue. Or they come across a person that's not looking right, that they now have to treat as protective custody.
Okay, since Eileen brought out these figures, it's some strange numbers, but two hundred and seventy-one calls to the Alamoles. And complaints about a motor vehicle, two hundred and forty-three. What, what kind of thing qualifies or classifies as a complaint about a motor vehicle?
You'd be surprised what people complain about.
I mean, are we talking noise complaints or just?
Uh, we're, I, I know which one.
So that's anytime someone sees something, a motor vehicle violation in front of them, and they call the PDD, report it. So if someone's speeding down your neighborhood, they call and report it. Someone crosses a WL line, they call and report. So, if someone's speeding down your neighborhood, they call and report it, someone crosses a W L line, they call and report it. And that's something that we have to go find the vehicle, or try to find the vehicle, and determine if a, a fraction actually occurred.
Okay, Eileen?
Are these actually calls for services, all the ones to the mall, or, or are they also directed patrols?
No, we take out, when we give you those numbers, we take out the directed patrol numbers.
Thank you.
As well as any self-generated numbers such as motor vehicle stops.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, I, that got a little afar of your, your SIU report.
Thank you, Eileen, for having the numbers, I appreciate it.
But while you're here, we're taking advantage of you.
No, I.
Your presence.
And I don't, I, I know I keep sounding doom and gloom when we talk about this, but it just, I just don't see it getting any better, and I just worry what will happen if it continues like this, and, but I, kudos to every single one of those officers who, knowing what they're gonna face every shift, come out, and they do it, and they do it professionally, and they do it with a smile most times. And, and they, they just, they're the ones who get it done, it's not me, they're the ones out there on the road getting it done.
And kudos from us as well, because I continually hear very good comments about the police department in Merrimack, and, that's in contrast to some of the other departments around here, and, not around Merrimack, but around the part of the country. I do hear very quite often how people are very impressed with the police force in Merrimack. They treat people respectfully, they do their job, they're professional, and, and we greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, that means a lot, really.
We're proud of all of our staff.
Even though they're twenty-five and were born the same year I started, but that's fine.
Well, I almost feel like I'm a real resident here, because I've been here longer than you've been on the police force, but I'm still a newcomer, and so, you know.
Me too, we're a little older than her, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just a little.
Thank you very much. Boy, we can, we know how to clean a room out, don't we? Moving along, we have donation acceptance to the Public Works Department in the Highway Division, submitted by Highway Operations Manager Lori Barrett, who apparently was excused tonight. Town Council to consider the acceptance of a donation valued at approximately a hundred dollars from Merrimack Crime Line, consisting of sixteen safety vests, nine trash pokers, and four trash pickers to the Public Works Department, Highway Division, for the use by the Adopt a Road volunteers pursuant to RSA ninety, thirty-one, colon, ninety-five, dash, E, and Charter Article eight, dash, fifteen.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Pokers and pickers.
Approve, motion by Bill.
I, I will second that long-distance approval.
Long-distance approve.
For the poker or the picker? The picker or poker?
Well, we're gonna take them both. Eileen, did you wanna speak to this, or? There's a little bit of backup material, apparently the, the, who is, I even lost it already.
Merrimack Crime Line had some safety vests and pickers and pokers to pick up trash on the sides of the road, and they donated them to the Public Works Department, which was very nice of them, to use for the public, for the Adopt a Road program, and the volunteers.
Thank you, Crime Line.
Thank you, Crime Line. So, motions on the table, we have a roll-call vote, unless there's anybody other, any other comments anybody wants to make. Seen none, we'll call for a vote. Finley?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Tom, yes?
Nancy, yes.
Nancy, yes.
Would you?
Yes, so that passes seven-zero-zero through roll-call vote. Moving along. So now we come to a proposal to plant a tree on town property used by the Merrimack Youth Association, submitted by Lori Rothhouse, the Town Council to consider a proposal to plant a tree on the M Y A property located at four-eight-seven Daniel Webster Highway, which is town-owned property, it's not M Y A property, but they use it.
So, good evening, I'm representing the celebrating fifty years of M Y A, and one of the things our committee wanted to do is to plant a tree to celebrate the Benharts, Terry and Tina Benhart. Terry was a longtime president, Terry was married to him, and she served too. And for all that they did for the town of Merrimack, how many kids went through those programs, the tree would represent really the love they had for the community and continued to grow for the M Y A. We would do a dogwood, which would be a budding white tree, and we look to do it on the left side of your M Y building to the left side. However, we'd like to ask the, in our proposal to the Town Council, that when we get the tree, if we wanted to move it a little bit, to make sure that it, it's really in the right place, because, you know, that's important, we'd like to do, we'd like to make sure it's perfect. Pull the mic closer.
Is your mic on, or just?
Is it on?
I don't even know.
Is it green?
We got, we got waved that by the people, hit the button again and just make sure.
Oh, now it is.
Now it is?
Do you want me to do it again?
Thank you.
I'm, I'm good.
So you, I was gonna ask, you're talking about a dogwood tree?
Yes.
Where specifically, I was distracted.
So when you look at the M Y A building, it would be to the left, near that window, right there. But again, when we get the tree, if we wanna move it around a little bit, we're asking for a little leverage there.
Okay, and if you would just clarify with Public Works, I know there's been talk about.
Exactly.
Changing the entrance to the M Y A building, and, you know, the ramp entrance in the parking lot and things like that, just to make sure it doesn't end up somewhere that they wanted to, in the future, be able to dig up, because I'd rather.
Exactly.
Have to dig that up.
We can do that, thank you.
Check with Lori or Kyle, or, or somebody, just before you.
Plant it.
Stick a spade in the ground.
Okay, we can do that.
Sure you're okay.
The bridge going over Babu Set Brook eventually, so that's gonna cause some issues.
Well, they're gonna replace that bridge, but you're not going that close to the Brook, are you?
No.
Hopefully. Finley, did you wanna?
You looked marvelous tonight, by the way.
Oh, my God. I was gonna ask you if you needed to excuse yourself, but since you can't financially benefit from this, I'm just gonna let it go.
I did that just because I knew we terrorized her, I'm sorry. I just, I had to explain to Lori about the potential intersection, well, eventual, I believe it will be intersection with the realignment of wire road coming into Route Three, because in my mind, the way I recalled it, it's likely to be the new entrance for the M Y A. So, in her, you know, the plan was in fact, to leave it towards the building, because the building won't be moved for that intersection. But, so I'm sorry, and I didn't know if I should have any input, but.
You have no financial benefit.
No, I have done.
Tree being planted, as far as I can tell. Peter?
Lori, this is a great idea, Mr. and Mrs. Benhart, great people, so dedicated to the community and the youth and sports and everything. I don't think there's anybody here who wouldn't support that.
Thank you.
And it was great to see them at that fiftieth year celebration that you held over.
It really was, it was so nice, and they really were, they teared up, and they just were so grateful that they just loved Merrimack so much, and that they had an opportunity to come back and celebrate, you know, with so many people who give so much.
Yep, awesome, anybody else have any comments?
Here, here.
Very good, so I need a motion to accept or allow the tree planting at the M Y A, the dedication of the tree. Moved by Lon Woods and seconded by Barbara. Okay, if there's no further comments, we'll call for a vote, again, roll-call, Finley?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
I, I agree as well.
Erin and I.
Would you?
That passes seven-zero-zero.
Thank you very much, thank you for your dedication to the town, too.
Thank you.
And why don't you say.
Thank you, Lori.
Why don't you say, he looks pretty good tonight, too?
Well, you do look nice, I have to second his thoughts.
So, he's kinda cute, too.
I apologize.
That's adorable.
Moving right along, so that was proposal to plant a tree. Number four on our agenda, utility easement review and acceptance for existing and proposed infrastructure crossing in a town right-of-way. Submitted, submitted, submitted by Meridian Land Services Certified Wetland Scientist Spencer Tate. Town Council to review and consider the acceptance for existing and proposed infrastructure to cross Jeb Road. And we have Dawn here to help us as well, thank you. Is this different than what we have in our packets, or?
It's different, right?
Different? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, appreciate your time tonight. My name is Spencer Tate with Meridian Land Services. I, I'll try to keep this relatively short and sweet, it's relatively simple proposal, but essentially I'll be asking the council to authorize the execution of an easement. And that is, we would like to formalize an existing water line that crosses underneath Jeb Road, and we're intending to propose a sewer, a septic forest vein to cross Jeb Road as well. The location is, it's twenty, twenty-five Jeb Road, which is parcel, lot six-eight-two-one-sixty-five, and six-eight-two-one-fifty-six, dash, six. The lot areas are point-one-eight and point-sixty-one acres respectively, so they're both existing non-conforming lots. The lots are owned, they're under the same ownership, the Schleifer Revocable Trust, Schleifer Family Revocable Trust. The owners intend to upgrade the existing septic system, they're not expanding the use of the structure, they're simply looking to upgrade what's there and bring it into compliance.
Just a minute, Eileen?
Sorry, I think the most important thing is that it's right next to the lake, and that's the reason why they're doing it, right?
Exactly right, yes. Yeah, essentially, the long and the short of it is, what we're proposing is a legal septic system. We have a shoreline approval, and the only thing holding up the, the approval of the replacement septic system is crossing Jeb Road, which is the town's purview, with the existing infrastructure, and also the proposed infrastructure. So it's, we're kinda, we're kinda backtracking a little, a little bit with the easement, to formalize what's there. Jeb Road, it's, it, it ends, you can actually see the edge of the gravel in this area, it actually ends. I don't know if you guys have a little copy of the plan up there.
Yeah, we do.
But it actually ends, and then it's almost entirely forested through here, and you can see it actually terminates another hundred feet beyond, so it's, it's essentially a paper road at this point. So again, this is a lot of, it's, I don't wanna say it's formality, but. It formalizes what's, what's existing. So, in case reference, I guess, I'll just suggest that the council did review and approve, or did authorize the execution of easements for other properties on Lakeside Drive, I think that was twenty-seventeen? There were two that were, the, the council has seen very similar proposals to this. And yeah, it's, it's an effort to do the most practical and response, environmentally responsible thing to, to bring this lot into compliance with the regulations. So if there's any questions.
What, so what's existing there today, and what are you adding or changing?
There's an existing well, there's an existing domicile, there's a currently vacant lot across, on the east side of Jeb Road, and the water line crosses from the existing well to the existing domicile. So there's a water line in there somewhere, underneath the road, and the current septic system is kind of here, it's, it's fifteen to twenty feet off the edge of the lake. The proposed system, it will be, involves crossing the Jeb Road with the, with the sewer forest vein, that would be the only component that's within the, the right-of-way.
So you're putting an forest vein to drive it up there?
Yeah, so it's an existing water line that's in the road currently, and there's a proposed sewer forest vein to utilize the same utility easement.
So there's a collection tank in the current location that's gonna then force it up, pump it up to the other?
It's adjacent to the current location, but, yeah, the, the location, the collection tank is, I believe it's compliant. We might be seeking a waiver on that. No, I think we have our fifty feet that's required, so there's a new, a new proposed collection tank with a pump chamber attached that will discharge through the line.
And that's just a leach field, a leach field up there?
Yeah.
Okay, Peter?
Couple of questions, the, the, are you gonna end up digging up the road that day, it's a gravel road?
Yes, but the location of the actual forest vein, again, the water line's in, there's no need to touch that.
Yeah.
The, where the proposed sewer forest vein will go is actually beyond the edge of the traveled way.
Yeah.
So it's not really, yes, it's in the right-of-way.
Yeah.
But no, it's not in the road.
Okay, so there, you've notified the Butters, I would take it in?
We did as part of the shoreline, yeah.
All right, so the day you do this work, is it gonna affect the other folks on Jeb Road, their travel? Okay, all right, good.
Yeah, there's no travel beyond that, you said it's all forested, and it's just a paper road.
Yeah, there's actually a utility pole here.
Oh, okay.
And you can, I don't know if, and I, I brought the septic as an exhibit, but we actually depict the tree line on here, which is, it's about here, so let's call that halfway through the lot, it's the existing tree line, and then mature, it's, so there's still no traveled way involved.
And, and this has obviously been approved, see, so the separation of the sewer line and the water line is all laid out correctly, and?
The shoreline permit's been approved, the septic design is approvable, it's ready for a stamp, but I can't stamp it until there's an easement that's executed, such that it's a legal design. Typically, when we submit to the state for a septic design, we're crossing a public right-of-way. Most of the less formal towns, let's call it, will, are okay with a letter from the road agent that, that says that temporary earth removal is, is allowable. But because of the location of the water line that's there, and the proposed sewer line and the M S four, Dawn felt it was, it was gonna be kind of the cleanest to, this would be the cleanest way to formalize things and, and kinda create a long-term legal system for this domicile.
Okay, thanks, any other questions? Finley? Barbara?
So, is there an underlying reason this is being done, they're moving the septic to the leach field? Is it because of the location to the pond?
It's because they wanna upgrade the septic system, and we, we, this is an existing separate lot of record, but the owner did wanna do what they felt was right, which was utilize their adjacent, shared ownership lot for the septic system. I suppose technically, we, we'd have to get a litany of waivers, but we could probably get an approved septic system on that lot.
And we know that there is no plans to do anything with Jeb Road over there in the future?
This is gonna go under Jeb Road, I guess the easement just allows them to maintain it, right? I mean, it's not like we're cutting off Jeb Road, that you can't use it.
One of, one of their questions in the beginning was whether they, we would give up that section of road. And I thought about that, and I had a couple of discussions, and with the M S four, this would be an area where we could potentially use in the future. I, I don't know, but for right now, I don't wanna give up anything on the lake area, because we have such little land out there right now. So this was the best solution, it gets the septic system away from the lake, which we desperately need for all of our testing. And, well, the only thing we are requesting is to have a six-inch Schedule eighty pipe be put underneath the right-of-way section, and then put your pump line under that so that nothing would happen to it, and you could easily repair it, pull it out and replace it in the future, should they need to. So, for right now, I would suggest doing this, and what I did is I went through our town attorney, and they provided me with, Spencer provided me with some language to begin with, I had her review it all. She's made all of the changes, and that's what I had passed out tonight, so all of her changes are within that document.
From our attorney's review?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or concerns? So what you need from us is, is approval for this quitclaim deed and Exhibit A, is that called out in the quitclaim deed, or? Do we need to call them separately?
No, you can just call them, you can call them together.
The quit, quitclaim deed includes Exhibit A.
Okay, but they both have a bazillion signatures, which is a formal way of saying more than one.
We need both of them signed.
Okay, so we need a, a motion to approve the easement request and authorization for, is it Eileen that signs this, or do you know?
Yes, she could sign that if. Yes, she could sign that if.
Eileen or her proxy to sign and make it effective.
So moved?
Moved by Nancy Harrington.
Seconded.
Seconded by, who said that? Peter? Seconded by Peter. Any other, any other questions or concerns? I'll call the question, roll call. Pete, Bill, did you have a comment?
Nope.
Great, thank you. Uh, by roll call, Finley?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Barbara? Bill?
I.
Tom, yes. Nancy?
Nancy, yes.
Okay, that passes seven zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll have Eileen or her proxy take care of the legal aspects of these documents.
We'll have the owners sign first and then it will come back.
That'd be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which brings us to a discussion of the, of a town council charter review, which was brought forward by Peter Albert. Whether he knew it or not.
Yeah, I, I guess I'll start this off, um, that, um, the, bringing this forward was due to the discussion regarding, um, our annual ballots and now how the law requires that we have to make each separate capital reserve fund expenditure, expenditure a separate question on the ballot. And one of the recommendations from the DRE, I believe, was-
DRA?
Huh?
DRA?
DRA, excuse me, was to go from a budgetary town meeting to a pure town council form of government. And our, um, our law firm, Drummond and Woodson, put together a memorandum for us. And, and looking at it, it's kind of an onerous process.
Absolutely is, yes.
And, uh, you know, and I guess I'm kinda, now that we've got the information in front of me, I, I don't know if I'm inclined to, to recommend we go through this process at this point. So I guess I'd be interested in hearing from each of you on your opinions as well.
Finley, are you jumping in?
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable where we are now. Pete and I have had a little conversations about this. I, I did have the opportunity to sit on the charter commission in two thousand five, six, I guess it was. And it, it was a massive project and Tom Mahon sadly is no longer a resident of our community because I would surely enlist him if we were to move forward with this process. But it's, um, it's, it's not, it, I don't believe the commission would be limited to just changing that. It opens it up to all kinds of possibilities. I don't know that it's a bad thing to look at. Again, for me, I'm comfortable with where we are with all the warts and little problems that are associated with it. I, I, I see communities that have, um, everything happen with the council. It, it seems that government grows a little bit more quickly than when you have a few more checks associated with it. And so I don't know if that would hold true in town, but that is a small concern mine with a change that is being suggested. But, but it was a great committee. It was probably, except for you guys, it was probably the best, you know, most amazing thing I've participated in in town government. It was, it was pretty, pretty amazing. Barbara?
Well, you know, of all of us, I'm probably the one that has the least amount of time in town. I came from a town in Connecticut where the town council had a mayor and there was a council or selectman and they had the power of the budget. And the idea was if you wanted to approve the budget or have any say in the budget, you had to go to a meeting that housed maybe sixty-five people. But they needed two-thirds of the town to show up and be in that room to vote. So it, I've always thought, since moving here, that it was particularly, um, good, a good process to be able to put down all of the expenditures for the budget in black and white and have the residents vote on them so that they have that say versus getting a budget and a property tax bill and they have no say in how that money is being spent. So personally, I like the way we do it now. Others may disagree with me and, and it'd be easier probably if we did have that power of budget approval outright. But like I say, on the other hand, I think it, it's, it's a rare opportunity for our citizens to actually be able to participate in the approval of the budget process. Granted, it gave us a few more gray hairs this past year, but again, I just think it's, no? Okay.
You don't have any gray hair.
Yeah, I do. Not many though. But anyways, I think it, I think it's a rare opportunity and whether our residents and our citizens take advantage of that or not, that's up to them. But it does take away that, you know, you can always say, you didn't vote on the budget.
Absolutely.
You know, it's up to them. The bottom line rests with them and I think that's as it should be.
Okay, thank you.
Except for those rare times when we do ordinances, thank you.
Yeah, um, I was a partner with Finley on the last time we went through this process. And I don't recall how much discussion there may have been at a board of selectmen or other entities involved in governing Merrimack at the time. I appreciate Pete bringing up the issue. Um, I don't think it hurts a thing, but I do think that, uh, we would be well advised to take the time we're suggesting. Because just having mentioned it, we'll start discussions from, if I may use the term gatekeepers, who wanna, who will want to know, just out of a matter of curiosity, what are you up to, Peter? And so be it. It's the way discussions start. Some of the best discussions I've been involved with started something like that. So I applaud you. And I don't think it's the last we've heard of it. Thank you.
I'll just throw my half a cent in. I, I agree with a lot of what people are saying. I'm pretty comfortable with the way things are. I can imagine that somewhere down in the future, we're liable to have a charter commission reestablished. At some point, I think it's liable to be to, to change from a town to a city, not necessarily just to go from budgetary to, to full town council or something like that. So I think because of the onerousness of the charter commission, it's probably a little more than what we're willing to bite into for this particular issue, when we're anxious to do a little bit more. And there's nothing saying you couldn't have the entire commission elected and put it in place and the only thing they do is the budgetary change. But then it's still, after going through two votes of the town to get established, has to go to another vote to get approved. And, and so we're, we're kind of presuming that we know where the town wants to go and stuff like that on this issue. And based on the converations and comments I'm hearing, I'm not convinced we're there yet, but it's certainly worth considering. And like Lon says, I'm sure it's gonna come back again. But, but I'm guessing it'll be, and I've had a lot of people say we should be a city. We shouldn't be a town at this point. So that, I mean, I'm sure, I know there is some sentiment out there to, to change. But I don't feel the ground swell that says we need to change right now and that we need to go have special elections and another election to, you know, bring, put this on the ballot and an election right afterwards to elect nine representatives. And then they've got ninety days or a hundred and twenty days or something to finish a report that gets filed six ways from Sunday and another vote by the town on whether or not they want to accept those recommendations. So that's my two cents. I don't, Nancy or Bill, do you want to throw in anything?
I have nothing. My thoughts were exactly what Finley. I think we're fine for now, but we'll keep our ears open and you never know, there may be other stimuli in the future that would really facilitate doing that. And that would be one of the items we bring up at the same time, so.
Bill, do you have any comments you want to add?
It, it's probably redundant, but I, I concur with, with, with all of you. The just, the, the two, the two talking points would be echoing what Councilor Albert said regarding the, the odorousness of the process. And probably a little bit of me being a geek, I guess, but anytime you do any type of a charter change, it's, it's not something that's gonna happen overnight. It's, there's, there's specific steps that need to be followed. So I think it's good for us as a council that Carrie Anne Roman was able to put this together so that we had an idea of what it actually goes into it. But, but secondly, I agree with Councilor Healy. I thought this year's vote, we saw an uptick in people coming out to vote. And I, and I, I like to think that since there was an uptick in people coming out to vote in our municipal election is actually indicative of the fact that people got the opportunity to have, to have an opinion on each particular line item as it relates to our budget. I think we had some concerns about that, but I think those concerns were alleviated once, um, you know, once, once we saw the votes come in. And obviously, uh, we're very lucky that we have a very educated community that understands what we're doing here in Merrimack in terms of, in terms of budgeting, in terms of stating for a rainy day and planning for things to continue, uh, the quality of life that, that we, we enjoy. So, um, I, I think this was, this was a good exercise to go through. But I, I agree with you, Tom. I think at some particular point, we'll talk about becoming a city. And I think we're, uh, we're not that far away from it.
Okay. Any other? Thank you, Bill. Any other comments on this topic?
I guess my question now would be, um, and I, at this point, like I said, I agree with all of you. Do I, Robert's Rules of Order, do I request that this get removed or?
No, we just let it lie.
We just let it, okay.
We, we discussed it, which is what the agenda item called for.
Okay.
If we're happy leaving it be, then, then we do. Okay. Moving along. That brings us to minutes. We have two sets of minutes here with us. The first being the minutes from the goal-setting session on June seventeenth, as presented to us by our facilitator, Primex.
So moved as presented for approval?
With corrections?
Okay. Moved by Nancy Harrington and, uh, seconded by Barb with corrections. Do you want to take your first crack at it?
Yeah.
I don't think the number, oh yes, there are numbers, thank you. Page one. Number two, under town buildings. The establishment of a capital reserve fund versus a capital expenditure fund. In my notes that I took from the flipboard during this meeting, I had this under the Reed's Ferry issue.
Under Reed's Ferry Station?
Yeah, and I'm looking at Paul because he was the one that suggested that we needed to set up a fund to handle expenditures for that. So it, it may be, it maybe should be under three versus two and I, I leave that to Paul to decide that.
I, I think it's not, do you mind if I speak? Do you mind if I speak?
Go ahead.
I, I don't think that it's inappropriate there. I think it's kind of in the middle of the two topics because from what I understand, we know what a capital reserve fund is.
Mm-huh.
But I believe a capital expenditure fund is for maintenance. Is that correct?
Yes.
So that relates both to Reed's Ferry and to the maintenance topic.
Okay, so we can make it more encompassing then?
Yeah, if you know how to do that, I'd be happy to take some suggestions.
At least the question here is not specifically tied only to Reed's Ferry.
Right.
It's tied to knowing more about him in general, so.
Okay, uh, for three C on, under Reed's Ferry Station, um, the way they should read is, uh, further research will also be needed to complete and ensure that the Shed Harris Fund is in the town's control versus, and not Merrimack Village District control, or was it turned over to the water system, with the water system to the MVD? In other words, did they turn over the water system and the fund or just the water system? And I'm not sure that was clear there.
Okay, you can make that clear.
Um, on page four, number four, highway garage sign. The council opted for a generic sign to be installed, one stating the name, the town of Merrimack. And in my notes and what was on the flip chart at the time, it was Town of Merrimack, Highway Maintenance and Maintenance Complex. I'm not sure where the new wording came from, but that's what we agreed to. On number six, C. Council asks that the report from the Building Department be shared with the Parks and Recreation Committee, and here's my add, and obtain feedback regarding the idea of, of raising, in other words, taking down unused buildings that are in poor repair and to report back to the council on their decision. So it, it was a little more than what was stated here. I'm on six C, page four. In that discussion, we had talked about tearing down some of those buildings, the old cabins. And we wanted, um, Parks and Rec Committee to come back and say if they thought that was a good thing or not.
Isn't that what's said in B?
I'm sorry?
Isn't that what's said in B? And it says, see the state of the buildings to help make a determination?
Into future funding, yeah. That's why I said we, we, when, on the flip chart, we only had that one item. That in, um-
No, but what I'm saying, you wanted to add some stuff under C.
Yeah.
But isn't that what B says?
Only if you want to say, you know, that it's the Parks and Rec Committee.
Okay.
So, so I'm sorry, repeat for me what you want to add.
Okay, we want to add, after committee, take out the period, and obtain feedback regarding the idea of raising, R-E-Z-I-N-G, unused buildings that are in poor repair and report back to the town council on their findings.
I, I guess that's a lot of detail. I'm not sure we need the detail in there, but we can certainly put it in there. We've been trying to limit them to, to the basic ideas or concepts. If you want to, if you want to add discussion about raising buildings and stuff?
Then I'm not sure what we're following up on. Because it's not clear enough, as far as I'm concerned, what the takeaway is.
Well, there was a report from the Building Department and we wanted it shared with Parks and Rec Committee. And we said we also wanted to evaluate whether to tear down buildings, is that?
Hmm, yeah.
Okay, which I thought was in that report, but-
Well, we, we actually, we're making that request, if you remember the conversation. We wanted, um, the Director of Prespacius to, you know, give us his vision of what he thought was gonna happen and did he need those buildings? And we wanted Parks and Rec to also have the opportunity to weigh in on that before we started raising any buildings. And then the other, only other piece that we did was in part E where we said, okay, let's go ahead and, and replace, you know, eight of the roofs. And one of those was supposed to be the arts and craft building. So like I said, I'm not sure, based on what I copied from the flip charts, where some of this came from. Got me?
Well, okay.
So. If you like, I'll stop because I had a lot more. But I'll rest.
Would it be, would it be appropriate for us to table these minutes to, the next week?
Yeah, if there's a lot more, that's probably a good idea.
And then, and then have a chance to go through and review these a little more carefully? Because I had several questions as well, so let's-
And maybe submit those suggestions to, they can incorporate them right there. It's a good idea.
So if it's okay, we'll table these to the next meeting?
Mm-huh.
Without objection or do we need a vote on that?
So I can withdraw my, um-
You could, or we can?
Motion. Right?
Yeah, you can.
Withdraw my motion and, uh, make a motion to table to the next meeting?
Okay.
Or separate.
No, that's, that's worse for me to do it all at once because we never voted on the first one. So if you're just gonna withdraw, then you withdraw. If your second approves.
Yeah.
Which you just did, yep.
And if you're gonna make a motion to table?
And motion to table to the next meeting?
And would you like me to submit commentary with this or what?
I would just-
How would I communicate what, so that we all can review it?
Just my opinion is just send it in and she can add it in.
Yes, Bill.
A motion to table is a non, is a non-divisible motion. If there are concerns regarding how this report should have been written up, I would suggest that it could be taken offline so that a more accurate- I would suggest that it could be taken offline, so that a more accurate picture of the minutes from our group-setting session can be reflected at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Which is what we were just saying.
Which is where I think we were headed.
Okay.
But I, but I appreciate the clarification. Um, all those in favor of tabling at this point?
You need a roll call?
Yeah, just one, one moment, please. Eileen?
I just wanted to say, Barbara, if it would help, um, we can send you the Word document. And if you, if you could do track changes, do, are you familiar with how to do that?
I can, if I can.
We can help you, Becky can.
I have a new version of Word, so if I can't find it, I'll make sure you can identify what the changes are.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, going for a roll call vote to table to our next meeting. Finley?
Yes.
Peter?
No.
Barbara?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Tom, yes. Nancy?
Yes.
Woodjay.
Woodjay. That passes six, one, zero with Peter Albert in, uh, in the negative. So, those minutes are tabled. We have minutes from July eighteenth. Look, you're just trying to confuse me, I know. Ain't it work? Um, we have minutes from the July eighteenth meeting. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, prove as presented.
Okay. Motion by Nancy, seconded by-
Second.
Peter? Did, uh, does anybody have any corrections or changes they wanna make to these minutes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bill.
On page three.
Thirty?
Line forty-six.
Three, I'm sorry.
Page three, line forty-six. Background is one word.
Okay.
That's it.
Does anybody else have any adjusted, adjustments? Seeing none, I'll call for a roll call vote on the minutes as amended. Finley?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Tom, yes. Nancy?
Yes.
Woodjay.
Those pass seven zero zero with one amendment, one modification. Which brings us to our final item, well, final items, comments from the press, nobody's here. Comments from the public, nobody's here. Comments from the council. Anybody have any comments they'd like to make at this stage? Bill?
I'm, I'm good, Tom. I'll wait till I get there and say number.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, that brings us to our final action of adjourning.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Bill.
That's appropriate. I'll second that.
Seconded by Nancy. Uh, all those in, well, we, roll call vote. Finley?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Myself, yes. Nancy?
Yes.
Wood.
Okay, we're adjourned, seven zero zero. Thank you very much.
Everybody, thank you very much for letting me participate.